Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I'm calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of Committee of the Whole. I am the Chair of this committee and I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Conno, Reich, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Goodman, Frye, Palmisano. Sometimes this is the hardest part of the meeting. So, we have an addendum to our agenda for today, which already had one item. And the addendum is a very brief item, and I think I'm going to ask that, just a courtesy from my colleagues, that we have this addendum item goal first. It is a verbal presentation from Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin County. And I know that we are joined today by the Director of Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin County, Scott Zemke, as well as Karen Mo. And I think they are going to just describe briefly what services are available to Minneapolis residents. We are right now, if you want to come on up and start approaching the microphone, we are working with our Communications Department in the city of Minneapolis to get out a broad message about how residents in Minneapolis that need various services, particularly energy assistance, as well as weatherization, how they will be able to access those services now. So, Mr. Zemke.
Thank you, Chair Glidden and Councilmembers. And we appreciate that very much, and that was one of the main reasons that we wanted to come here today. Wanted to introduce ourselves again. I'm Scott Zemke. I'm Executive Director at Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. Karen Mo is our Director of Program Operations, so she manages all of our direct client services. We wanted to make sure you had our contact information in case you had any questions. Today is the first day of the Energy Assistance Program for federal fiscal year 15. And as of today, we will be providing services in the city of Minneapolis under the Energy Assistance Program, so primary heat grants, crisis grants, and energy-related repair, furnace help. And first and foremost, again, I wanted to assure you that your constituents will be served by these programs. We have a long history of delivering the Energy Assistance Program in Suburban Hennepin County, and we want to make sure that we provide those services to your constituents as well. You have our cards and our contact information. We also provided a one-sheeter that just kind of gives some basic information as to what's happened and what is happening. Anybody who has submitted an application already, we will get those applications. There is a plan in place. Those will be processed just in our normal processes. They will be integrated into the applications that we already have, and we will take care of them in the order that they were sent in to Minneapolis. We will be sending notices to all households, not only those that have applied, but also those that have not yet applied, to make sure that they know how to get in touch with us and where they can find us, how they can call us, how they can email us, how they can fax us, and also our website. We are looking to move very quickly to get locations throughout the city of Minneapolis. Right now, we're looking between three and four locations scattered throughout the city. Those will be walk-in sites, so people can come in with their applications. If their applications are incomplete and they need to bring in additional information, they'll be able to bring in those into those sites. And also, if they need to access crisis assistance, if they have an immediate need, they will be able to come into those sites as well. We've met, a number of organizations have reached out to us, and we're very grateful for that. And we want to make sure, again, that people don't have to come out to St. Louis Park in order to get the services they need. We want to make sure that we're in their neighborhood, in your neighborhood. Also, want to make sure that you know that we currently already have multilingual skills in our office, in Spanish, in Mung, in, excuse me, Spanish, Mung, Russian, and Spanish? Excuse me, Spanish, Mung, Russian, and Somali, excuse me. And we will be expanding that capacity as well. Since the program is doubling, we want to make sure we've got great capacity there. And then finally, we would just want to, again, request your help. I know you said you're working on communications. We want to make sure that you and your staff have the information that you need to give to your constituents should they have questions. So, if there's any questions that you have or anything that I can, anything that I can help you with, please let me know. I'm happy to take questions.
So, thank you very much. I don't know if Councilmembers have questions, but I will say that, and I am using speaker management, so let me know if I've missed you. But it was just very helpful to get your information. Thank you for letting us know personally how to contact you. Thank you also for letting us know that you are looking currently for Minneapolis walk-in locations. I think all of us are just wanting to know how we help with this communication effort in ensuring that there is a seamless service delivery for residents in Minneapolis and how they can best access the services. So, thank you very, very much for that. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Zemke, a quick question for you with regards to the satellite offices. You know, you're talking about four. Where are you thinking you might locate them?
We are, we've been contacted by Hennepin County to get, and they've offered access to some of their satellite offices. We've also talked to a couple of, I'm sorry, Chair Glidden, Councilmember Yang. We've been in contact with Hennepin County to look at getting into their sites. Also, reached out to a couple of community-based organizations about getting into their sites as well. But initially, what we're thinking of is something in near north, something centrally located, like midtown or downtown, and then south Minneapolis as well, possibly also in northeast Minneapolis. Those are kind of up in the air right now. So, near north, central, and south are the one, main ones we're focusing on.
And will you be checking in with the Councilmembers that, who represent the areas close to where you'd like to have a satellite office?
Yes, we, if, yes, we will contact, we could contact the Councilmember that's representing those areas to see what type of input they might have. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just, that's a good suggestion, Councilmember Yang, that if Councilmembers have questions or follow-up, I encourage you to also be the ones to reach out to Community Action of Suburban Hennepin County. You have their contact information, so I think it's on us as well to make sure that if we have suggestions that we think might be helpful in facilitating the ongoing services, that we reach out and we assist you. So, again, thank you very much. I wanted to just clarify, because there are multiple service areas that, where there's going to be continuing service delivery, and I didn't know if Ms. Siegel or others had some additional information, just to clarify, because I believe you're focusing on the energy assistance. So, and this is, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. These would be primarily the utility bill payments.
The utility bill payments.
And furnace repair, but not the weatherization program.
Right. And Ms. Siegel, what was the organization that's providing the weatherization work?
On an interim basis, Sustainable Resources Center will be providing the weatherization program services. They're located at 1081 10th Avenue Southeast in Minneapolis, and their phone number is area code 612-870-4255. So, people interested in those services should be contacting that organization. I believe that 311 already has that, so if people call 311, they will be directed, you know, appropriately there to the Community Action of Suburban Hennepin or Sustainable Resources as appropriate.
Thank you. And again, I'll just say, I know that our Communications Department is looking at how to enhance all these communication efforts, and so I think we're going to be looking for some more visible ways to get out the message very soon. So, Mr. Zemke.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Glidden. I also wanted to point out that we do have an existing relationship with Sustainable Resources Center. They have been the weatherization provider for Suburban Hennepin County. So, we already have what's called an EEP Weatherization Coordination Agreement with them. So, those things should integrate very seamlessly.
Well, thank you again very much for being here, taking the time to introduce yourself personally. Very much appreciated, and we welcome the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Glidden and Councilmembers. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. And as, that was a verbal report. I don't think we have any action to take. And so, with that, we are on to item number two, which is a presentation by our Human Resources Department on the Employee Engagement Survey. I know, I'm not sure who is leading off the presentation here, so I will invite whoever that is to come forward. I think we were waiting for Ms. Ferguson, and she might have been delayed. So, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and give an overview, and then we can move forward into the presentation. And just as we're getting set up here, I will say to Councilmembers that linked on the agenda, the online agenda, is the link to where you can find the very detailed results, department by department, for the Employee Engagement Survey, to dig deeper into these results and understand them through each department. What we are getting today is a bit more of the citywide overview, as well as the paper materials that you have in front of you. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Glidden, Councilmembers. This morning, as far as our agenda is concerned, we'll do introductions first, and I'll just start with that. From the Human Resources Department, Chuck Bernardi, Jill Lanta Sears, myself, and Ms. Ferguson will be presenting. We'll talk about frankly what employee engagement really is, how that differs from satisfaction, the administration of the survey and how it was designed, the overall results, action planning, and next steps. So, looking at the definition of employee engagement, what you'll notice here are some key words about employees being motivated to contribute to organizational success, and that they're willing to apply their best effort to accomplishing tasks important to the achievement of organizational goals. And by that definition is how the survey was designed. Looking on to the engagement and satisfaction, you'll notice that on the engagement side, that there are really two things that are most important, and that is that an engagement survey deals not only with employee motivation, but also the commitment, and that's mutual commitment between employee and employer. Satisfaction, which is a survey that people may be more familiar with, really has to do with how happy employees are with the content of their jobs. So, it covers the basic concerns and needs of employees, but it does not address the level of motivation or involvement. And we are taking the approach to employee engagement. Survey administration and design. The survey was administered May 19th and June 6th. Branding is My Minneapolis, and I'm going to turn it over mid-slide here to Chuck.
Thank you. And I'll just make sure, sometimes you forget to introduce yourself, and I forgot to introduce you as well. And this is Ms. Marilyn Talarico from Human Resources. Mr. Bernardi.
Good morning, Councilmember Glidden, members of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Chuck Bernardi. I work in the Human Resources Department. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this important information to you this morning. A little history and context, this is the fifth time the city has administered an Employee Engagement Survey. The first one was administered in 2004. The one prior to this was administered in October, November of 2011, with the results being released in January of 2012. I don't have bifocals, so I'm going to have to go back and forth here a little bit. In terms, as Marilyn, Mary Lynn said, the survey was administered between May 19th and June 6th. All employees were invited to participate, albeit through the online survey or through paper surveys. The Convention Center and Public Works have huge numbers of employees that don't have day-to-day access to computers, so providing them with a paper survey is, was provided as an alternative. Our survey is really designed to look at three levels, an index, a theme, and survey items. Within the survey, there are three indices we will talk with you about this morning. There are 12 themes within the survey, and there were 56 survey items within the survey. We administered this survey in partnership with our partners, with IBM Connexa. We've used this firm four times. The first survey was actually developed and administered in-house. The information we get from this survey provides us with an immense amount of data that we can use to build a foundation for continuous organizational change and improvement. We also, in terms of themes, we added two new themes about my career and also about equity. So, there are questions that comprise those different themes. We also changed the reporting, so departments that have a small number of employees or work units, if they got at least five responses from their survey, they would get a report. So, for example, our Intergovernmental Relations Department, they typically have had between seven and 10 employees, and they've never gotten a report until this year. So, that's providing more information to departments to make decision-making at even work unit or divisional level. Next slide, please. I'm happy to report that we had the highest survey response rate of the five surveys. In 2011, we had a response rate of 65.7, and this time, we had a response rate of 66.4%. The Employee Engagement and Performance Enablement both saw significant increases in the organization, which is very positive. Two areas that continue to be challenged are employees are not always feeling valued by the organization, and a promising future also is an issue with employees, as it has been in the last, at least the last three surveys. At a higher level, the city showed strengths and opportunities in the following categories. Customer service was identified as a strength, ethics, immediate supervisor, inclusion, and performance management. Areas of opportunity for the city of Minneapolis as an employer are communications, my career, and recognition. Next slide, please. This slide is showing you the city overall results for employee engagement. The two bars at the top that have green, yellow, and red are showing you the 2014 Employee Engagement Index results and the 2011 Employee Engagement Survey results. As you can see, the percentage favorable went from 56 to 63, or a seven percentage point increase, which is statistically significant. The yellow is a neutral category, and the red is an unfavorable category. We saw decreases in both neutral and percent unfavorable. Now, the Employee Engagement Index is made up of four particular, four specific items. These items are, I rarely think about looking for another job with another organization, which is really measuring an employee's commitment to the organization. The second question is, I am proud to work for the city. That is measuring their pride in the organization. That particular item went up seven percentage points from 2011, which again is statistically significant. The third question that makes up this index is, I would recommend the city is a great place to work. That has increased 10 percentage points from 2011. That's measuring an employee's willingness to be an advocate for the city as an employer. And then finally, the fourth question that makes up this particular index is the overall, I'm extremely satisfied with the city as a place to work. That we saw an increase of eight percentage points from 2011. A couple of other things I'd like to point out about this slide. You'll see US Norm. That is an external benchmark that the city uses, and it's not a perfect measure, but it does measure those organizations in the private, public, and nonprofit sectors, which we do compete for employees with as an employer. You'll also see at the bottom there, you may see at the bottom there, MEU. That stands for the Most Engaged Units. That is the top 20% in terms of engagement of the departments or work units or divisions in the city. So, you can see the purple line there is higher across the board, or there's the most engaged units in the city, and that's our internal benchmark. It gives departments an opportunity to look at how they compare to the most engaged units.
So, I'm, excuse me, we do have a question, and I might have been missing my thing. Councilmember Gordon.
Appreciate that, and it's just on that point, so I thought it would be helpful to ask it there. So, you said 20%, and I was curious, based on the employees, or of, if we have 100 departments, does that mean the top 20 of those departments? So, they could be very small departments. And we have a list of who those most engaged units, who that actually refers to.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon. Yes, it is the top 20%. It's not necessarily department. It could be a division in Public Works. It could be a precinct in the Police Department. It could be a division in the Attorney's Office. And yes, we do have a list of those top 20%. Would you like that information? I don't have it with me, but I can quickly get it.
And it may be available online. I just noticed it was all divided up by departments, and so I didn't find it there. But I would appreciate it if you could to find out who our most engaged units are. Then we can make sure to recognize them for being so engaged, and hopefully, one of them might even be the City Council.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon will get you that information.
Thank you.
Now, for the city to push the needle of engagement even higher, these particular survey items in the survey are the areas that research shows that we can even do better as an employer, as an organization for our employees. These also show, there's 10 particular items. The items that make up the Employee Engagement Index we just reviewed, those four, they're not necessarily actionable, but if we take action on any of these items, we can increase engagement in the city of Minneapolis. It ranges from, there's a promising future for me at the city, the theme that comes with is my career, I feel valued as an employee of the city, recognition. Even though these are maybe not at a level where we'd like them, we have seen increases across the board on those items that we used in 2011. There's six particular items there that saw five percentage points or higher, and again, those are statistically significant. So, by taking action on these particular items, we can further improve engagement in the city of Minneapolis. Some of the things that the city has done in response to previous surveys, the Minneapolis Matters Newsletter came out of the employee survey, I believe, in response to the 2006 survey. The total compensation statements that all employees receive are a result of the employee survey. The alternative work arrangements, policy, and procedures that we developed, the council approved in 2010, came out of the 2009 survey. And in response to the 2011 survey, we just started the pilot STAR Awards Program on July 1st, and to date, we received 23 nominations for the STAR Awards Program. So, taking these types of actions can improve engagement in the city. So, those are some examples of actions that the city has taken in response to previous surveys.
So, Mr. Bernardi, I actually put myself in queue with a question here, and you've, I think, answered it kind of in part with what have we done in response to past surveys. But are these items ones where we have focused attention in the past? I mean, I can see the most recent results, but we're not seeing the full results, and I know there were some different results in the survey than our last survey. So, are some of these repeat areas where we've tried to make progress, and we know we need to continue to dig deeper and try harder to improve these results, are some of these new ones? Can you just tell us a little bit more about what we're seeing here and how we can improve our efforts?
Sure. Chair Glidden, that's an excellent question. If you look at this slide, you'll see that I feel valued as an employee of the city, and the theme there that that's tied to is recognition. In the 2011 survey, that was the number one item that we, that was recommended that we take action on. So, we developed a cross-departmental work team. The employees are from 10 different departments, and as a result of their work, we came up with a STAR Awards Program, trying to make further recognition, you know, you can do it formally, you can do it informally. There's not a one-size-fits-all approach to recognition, but this is just one more attempt to try to do a better job as an employer of recognizing our employees and the contributions they make to our organization. The communications, that's been, that was a new item this time. There's open and honest two-way communication at the city. That's also an area that possibly the city could look at, but we're also recommending that we try to tackle, number one, there is a promising future for me at the city in terms of my career. As you'll see later in the presentation, we're recommending or asked all departments to take a look at that and work on that within their own department, along with other priorities that they have identified within their survey results.
Okay. So, there's going to be a later slide where you prioritize your kind of overall city recommendations to departments, or?
Yes, to some extent.
And then, I guess my other question is, knowing, again, we're not digging into individual department results here, but you certainly are, I would assume, in Human Resources, is how are we working with some individual departments that might have had different challenges or opportunities to help them have the tools to address those and work on their employee engagement?
Chair Glidden, I can answer that question now, or I can wait till the, that information will be covered in the presentation.
Okay, then we'll wait.
Would that be okay?
That's fantastic. I'm not seeing other questions, so.
Okay, thank you. Again, we have the employee engagement key drivers. These are two areas that the survey focused on, feeling valued and sense of belongingness, and again, a promising future. This is really just a different way of presenting the data on the other slide, but again, if we work on these two areas as an organization and in departments where it's also been identified as an opportunity, we again can make key headway in improving engagement in the city of Minneapolis.
And when you have those, kind of going back a slide, when you have these points underneath these areas, the key drivers, are those based on previous surveys and kind of digging into with employees what they see in that item, or is this sort of research tells us when people answer this question, this is often what's going on?
If I go back, if I go back, Councilmember Glidden, if I go back to this particular slide, you'll see that of these, I believe there's 10 items on this slide, six, three of those items are new, six of the, wait, no. One of the items is new, or just what I'm getting this confused now. Three are new, number 13, 20, and 23, and the other ones we've used before. Each time we do the survey, we review it to see how the items are performing. We rely a lot on our own internal professional judgment, but we also rely on our external survey partner to help us with our survey design and survey question, because they have a huge database of questions that they use all over the country, and they can provide statistical validation of how these items perform and measure different things in our organization.
Okay. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And I thought of this, looking at this slide here and some of the anecdotes that I've heard, communications among employees, that there's, there may be some differences in the sense of belonging and the promising future that people feel based on their ethnicity or some other characteristics. And then it made me curious, and I suspect maybe we can't even capture this data, but have we done anything with this survey to try to look at if there's any difference? For example, if our youngest employees don't feel like they belong, and they don't feel like there's a future, or something like that? Because we could, if we had that, there's a possibility we are inadvertently making it harder for some of the people we might actually want to keep the most, if that makes any sense. And I'm just wondering if we know that, or if there's a way to use the survey to And I'm just wondering if we know that, or if there's a way to use the survey to find that out.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, we do capture demographic, different demographic questions, and we can run reports on different slice and dice of data in different ways. With respect to the age of our employees, in 2009, the results showed that our younger workers, 20 to 30, were our most engaged. And in 2011, that had totally flipped. They became the least engaged. I believe it had to do with the budget situation, they're being the least senior in the organization, and not knowing if they're going to have a job, or they're going to end up in the job bank. This time, we did not have, I mean, our previous mayor requested that we not do the survey during budget time, so we moved it to a spring administration. I don't know the impact that had on the overall results, but we didn't have budget cuts when we were doing the survey this time, so that may also have had an impact on the results. I don't know that for sure, but I just think it would have some. There was going to be some demographic, we are going to share some demographic information here with you this morning, and that's going to be coming up in a few slides. But if there's specific information that you are interested, we'd be glad to meet with you to discuss that.
Madam Vice President, so I appreciate that, and I also kind of agree with looking at some of the past reports and understanding the budget and what was happening in the city and layoffs and not layoffs. I appreciate that. I am particularly interested in feeling valued in the sense of belongingness and the promising future related to people of color versus white employees. I think that's the thing that I've heard concerns about, and it would be interesting if we could look at that and even look back at that and even look at that again in the future, especially if it looks like there's a, much of a difference. So I appreciate that.
Now, this is another slide. This is showing a different index. Remember, I talked about three different indices within our survey. This one's talking about performance enablement. Now, performance enablement is defined as the degree to which an employee feels supported and enabled by the employer. The ability, it affects their employee's ability to get their job done. So again, at the index level, you can see that the city improved by seven percentage points from 2011 to 2014, which again is statistically significant. We also saw decreases in neutral and percent unfavorable. This particular index is made up of seven particular questions, and I won't read them all to you, they're on the bottom there. But again, you can see that of six of the seven questions, the city of Minneapolis as an employer saw statistically significant increases across the board, with the exception of the last question there, "The people I work with cooperate to get the job done." That's always been a strength in each of the surveys that I've been involved in, and that even though it wasn't statistically significant increase, it did go up by 3%, which is good. And again, you have your 2014 results, your 2011 results, your 2009 results, the most engaged units, and then comparing it to our external benchmark, the US NOR. If there are no more questions about this particular slide, I'm going to turn it over to my HR colleague, Jolanta Sears. Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chair Glidden, members of the committee as a whole, my name is Jolanta Sears. I am also part of the HR department, and you have had an opportunity to hear about engagement, the engagement index, and the performance enablement index. And the first thing that I would like to share with you is the interaction between those two indices. Yes, that's very good. Good morning. If you are, look across the, there is, there's the cursor. If you look across the horizontal axis, that's performance enablement. If you recall, that's the amount to which the organization supports employees in their attempt to do their work and do their best. The vertical axis is employee engagement, the degree to which employees feel committed, take pride in their organization, advocate for the city, and feel a general sense of satisfaction. If you look at the four quadrants, if you look at the lower left quadrant, that is an area that needs attention. Enablement is low, engagement is low. There isn't the infrastructure set up to support performance. Employees are not feeling very committed to the organization, not very passionate about it. If you look in the lower right quadrant, we have high enablement, the infrastructure is there, but employees aren't passionate. We have all the systems and supports in place, but people don't really feel committed or engaged in their organization. In the upper left, we have high employee engagement. People are passionate, people are energized, but we don't have the supports in place for them to be able to do their work. The best of all possible places is the upper right, where we have high engagement and high enablement. The organization is firing on all cylinders, people are passionate, and they're also given all the support they need to do the work that they're capable of doing. So this is the interaction. We need both enablement and engagement. We have engagement as the sense that employees can bring to the table in terms of how passionate they are about their work, but we also have a necessity of having systems in place that help support that performance. I can say right now that the city as a whole, we're right about there, we're moving in the right direction. A majority of our departments fall in about this area, hold on here, in this area. So we are a small cluster here in the needs attention, but moving in the right direction, and then a number of departments here hitting on all cylinders. So essentially, I would see this as very good news for the city. As Mr. Bernardi mentioned, we have 12 themes, 56 questions divided into 12 themes. The ones in green are our strengths, performance management, immediate supervisor, ethical behavior, inclusion, customer service, all of those are indicated as strengths. Work environment, even though it is a high percent favorable, 66%. Part of the definition of being a strength is you can have, you cannot have greater than, greater or equal to 20% of employees who see that unfavorably. We hit right at 20%, 1% fewer, that would have been a strength as well. We have some areas that are in the neutral area, department leadership, equity, my career, communication, and employee involvement. The opportunity that comes up again and again is employee recognition. That is a theme that has emerged on, I think, the 29, 2009, the 2011, and now the 2014 survey. There's an interesting sense to recognition. Yeah, there's an interesting sense to recognition. We are doing something citywide. I think Mr. Bernardi mentioned it, the STAR Program. We have some great activity going on there to recognize individuals citywide for their contributions, for their outstanding leadership, and also for their sense of optimism that they bring to the organization. Noting something about recognition, we tend, as managers, as human beings, we tend to focus on things that are wrong, that are amiss. It's part of our human nature. It's part of our self-preservation skill, because if something's amiss, it may harm us. So it is, it is quite a challenge to move that thinking into let us find the things that are going well, that we can recognize both formally and informally, saying thank you, acknowledging the work that people are doing.
So I just wanted to do one quick thought, just since this is, recognition has clearly been an item where it's been identified, survey after survey, or at least for the few most recent surveys, as an item that as a city we need to invest more thought on how to achieve a better result here. Is there something that, kind of in the literature or whatever, that tells us this is kind of the range of items that would help move the dial on recognition? Or is this more an issue of continuing to dig in deeper with our employees to determine what would help with this item?
The primary challenge in offering recognition is recognition is a very personal sort of event. What I feel as recognition may not be what anyone else feels as recognition. So it's finding out, it's connecting more on an individual level with employees, finding out what they find as recognizing or affirming and offering them that item. In many cases, it is as simple as saying thank you, I noticed the good work you did, I recognize this as an aspect where you went above and beyond, I noticed it, and thank you so much. So it varies from person to person. There are suggestions, lists of suggestions of how we can recognize employees, and we are continuing to promote those activities. Thank you. This is the, this is the wonderful slide. These are our highest rated items, and you can see by the green arrows, those are items that we improved over the 2011 percent favorable by at least five percentage points. I think every single item we have improved, other than... I had an opportunity to see and hear the survey results. But we have made dramatic improvements in each of our highest rated survey items. Again, very good news. We look at the lowest rated survey items, let me rephrase that as the highest percent unfavorable. So the highest percent, 44%, 44% of employees rated this item, where I work, we have enough people to get the work done, as unfavorable, down to 26% of employees viewed this item unfavorably. Department leadership demonstrates employees are important. This is like a golf score that'll lower the number the better. So again, we have improved by decreasing the percent unfavorable on a number of items. The first item, getting enough people to get the work done, told of upcoming changes, satisfied with the opportunities for career development. Department leadership demonstrating that employees are important. We have made improvements in each of those areas. One of the items that we have tried to communicate to our action team liaisons in each department and also to each department head, that the best action to take is not necessarily tackling one of the lowest rated items. We ask them sometimes to look at areas where they have a strength and continue to capitalize on that, or look at an area where they are kind of in the neutral zone, and they can move that into a strength. Councilmember Gordon, you asked about what our engagement or enablement results by ethnicity. This is, we included very few slides, we did want to include them by ethnicity. That obviously is a focus, with a focus on equity. If you look at each of the categories that are listed, the 2014 results exceed the 2011 results. So in every group reported, we have had an improvement in employee engagement. So people of all these ethnicities are reporting, they are feeling more committed, they take more pride in their organization, they're advocating more, they're satisfied with their work. Again, good news. To get that down into how do they feel on particular items, I feel included, my ideas count, we can provide you with a report on those specific items. But generally speaking, I would say we're looking at good news. Performance enablement, again, is my performance supported by the organization. We have kind of the same situation, where regardless of ethnic group, we see an improvement in 2014 results over 2011 results. By gender, females are reporting higher levels of engagement in 2011 than in, sorry, in 2014 than in 2011, as well as our males. Females are a slight bit more engaged than males, generally speaking. This is true in most surveys. So if we look at performance enablement, again, an improvement, 2014 over 2011, females reporting a higher level of seeing their performance enabled as opposed to males in our current group. Again, a very typical result. Engagement and performance enablement results by disability, a slightly different picture in that if we look at 2014 versus 2011, we have a less favorable view of employee engagement among those who self-describe themselves as disabled. So that has decreased in 2014 versus 2011. Also, in terms of performance enablement, a slight decrease, 51% favorable versus 54% in 2011. Again, these data can be cut in smaller increments. There are other demographic slices that we could have available for you. Please just ask us, and we will be happy to report those. I will now turn it over to Mary Lynn Tellerico to talk about our next steps.
Chair Glidden and councilmembers, the Employee Engagement Survey is really designed to drive action. And something that we've learned from the 2014 survey results is that if employees say that they have heard and seen the survey results, they were 30 percentage points more engaged than, than folks who said they had not. If they'd actually had the opportunity to discuss the last survey results and possibly problem-solve around them, the engagement score went up by 34 percentage points. We get the most increase from those who report having seen action taken on the engagement results, up 49 percentage points from folks who had neither seen nor heard, nor participated in discussion of results. So clearly, if we want to increase employee engagement, we need to take action on the results. We've done a number of things this year to make it easier to take action on employee, the Employee Engagement Survey results. We're encouraging the department heads to take a more focused approach to the number of items that they select to work on to improve, so that they can make a more concerted effort on a couple of things and keep the effort more concentrated. We are encouraging people to select, our departments to select, one or two items really to work on. This is, again, an area with all of our competing priorities every day, to be able to really focus in on doing a great job on a couple themes. Where we have restructured somewhat to take a more of a top-down approach, where the department heads are the drivers of communicating the survey results and the owners of the action planning. And we've also provided a structure for action team liaisons. These are people in the departments who have been designated to support the department head in communicating the results and also action planning. In addition to that, we've provided a network opportunity for all of the action team members so that they can share what they've, what has worked for them, they can brainstorm around barriers that they're facing, and stay in touch with each other around tips and best practices. We've added new tools and a new structure to the supportive action planning, so the tool has been provided from our IBM partner, and this is an opportunity to get ideas about what to do on certain survey items, as well as to log in, if you will, or maintain their action plan online. And lastly, we've met with all the department heads to discuss action planning strategy. So actually, sitting down with the department heads and talking with them about what are their results, how are they thinking of addressing them, and then in addition, brainstorming some ideas for, for help, or perhaps different perspectives on what they might be able to do. And that's also been in conjunction with their action team member and their HR generalist.
So I had a question on this item, just because...
So I had a question on this item, just because I know that you had some similar version of this action planning strategy after our last survey. We've actually done it for a couple surveys in a row at least, although I think kind of the structural support has continued to be enhanced. And so I was just curious if you could comment on what was the participation like after the last survey? Clearly, we've seen some increased positive results in the Employee Engagement Survey. I was just curious on how we evaluated participation by departments in the action planning strategy and then, you know, after they did their action plans, which I see we have a, you know, a format for ensuring action plans get delivered. And do we have any further follow-up after that, either that happened after the last survey or planned for this time to determine were those action plans implemented? And, you know, those kinds of items.
If you're asking about participation in the survey, we have clearly seen some increases in the...
Not the survey, I'm asking about participation...
In the action planning process?
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I interrupted you.
Thank you for the clarification. So you're asking about participation in the action planning process. I'm going to defer to Mr. Bernardi and Ms. Sears.
Councilmember Glidden, I understand your question to be, what is a success in previous action planning strategies in terms of departments really taking this to heart and doing something with the results? In 2009 and 2011, we used a, what we call a survey champion model. In a lot of departments, we saw very active participation. In some departments, we did not see as good a participation, to be candid. But in those departments that did do something, really took this to heart and got their senior leadership involved in moving this forward, we saw significant results in terms of increases in engagement and performance enablement. We've tried, we've asked departments for the things they're working on, we post them on City Talk describing the actions they're taking in response to previous surveys. But at the end of the day, it's not Human Resources' responsibility to do what the department is supposed to do. It's their responsibility. And as a staff person, it's very difficult for me to hold somebody accountable for the actions they should be taking in their department. I don't have that authority.
Okay. Well, and that is fair enough, and I see Ms. Ferguson coming forward.
I'd like to also add a piece to that, too. One of the areas that I did notice after meeting with the staff that had been here is that indeed, when the leader of that particular department was not engaged and involved, it decreased the likelihood that there would be actually execution. So one of the things that we also did in addition to what Mr. Bernardi mentioned is we made a real strong concerted effort to really meet and reclarify and readjust what the roles of everyone is in the execution of the employment engagement action teams. So we spent a little bit more time, being a little bit more deliberate in really helping department heads understand that instead of the old model, which was more of someone in their department supporting the effort, that we wanted to go to a different model, which is the role of the leader in driving this process. And I think we're hoping that by doing that with all departments, that that indeed will help to reinforce the importance of the leader taking a significant role in that. And so I do want to also report that we've had tremendous success initially in the participation. All department heads have participated and have worked with Human Resources in making this happen. But again, one of the things, just a little tweak we did, was reinforce and clarify what the role of Human Resources is in this process, what the role of the department head is in the process, and spent more time in really providing people with additional training, support, and tools to really help hopefully drive that process. And went more from a support role and then having that action team member support the work of the department head in moving the work forward.
Well, thank you very much for that. And I think just because of this moment and the presentation, I want to acknowledge that we're joined by both our city coordinator, Mr. Cronk, and our deputy city coordinator, Mr. Strobel. And I just want to thank you as well as our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Ferguson, for helping be involved in this process. I think just, again, your comment that HR doesn't tell departments what to do is, you know, really important for us to understand how we provide those supports to the departments to make it something where they have the tools, but also reinforcing these messages that leadership is very important in being involved. And I think this is where the participation of the city coordinator and your office in supporting these efforts is very important, as well as our engagement, frankly, from the city council level and saying we think that the engagement of our employees is key to the success of our city as a whole, and that we have an expectation for department leadership to be involved. And I would say that may be on my personal basis, that I have an expectation that department leadership will take this very seriously in making sure that the health of our city is moving forward well. So I know you had one last slide. I don't know if there was some additional final presentation, then we'll see if there are any additional comments. And thank you.
So to outline the general structure of what we have been doing throughout the course of the summer, if you will, as the survey results were presented to the executive team on July 21st, we've trained all of the action team members, taken a more active role in training them and to help shift the model and the understanding of the roles and responsibilities of everyone in the process of action planning, including department heads, HRGs, the action team liaisons, and those of us on the employee engagement team. We have worked with the departments to share the survey results. All of the results are posted on City Talk. We've also communicated with the Board of Business Agents. We've had action team members, or action team planning sessions with the department heads, action team liaisons, and HR generalists, to which I alluded previously. And again, this is to take a look at each department's specific results with the department head and problem-solve brainstorm suggests, support them in the process. We have suggested concentration on one or two areas for the enterprise and departments to work on for improvement. And finally, today, we are presenting to you, the committee as a whole, action planning will continue. And I mentioned previously that we have a new tool that we have offered in support of action planning. This is a place where departments can enter their plans. Should they choose to have their plans included in their business plan or some other process that they use within their department, they can simply enter information that indicates where their action plan is. And then finally, the My Minneapolis Action Team Meetings, we'll continue to hold those every two months, and we're going to do that for a longer period of time than has happened in the past in order, again, to continue to provide support to all departments. And that is the conclusion of the presentation. Other questions?
All right. Well, I want to say thank you very, very much to the entire Human Resources team that has supported this presentation and supported the employee survey. I'm not seeing other questions right now, but I just might make some final comments because I think overall that the message from this is incredibly positive, and it really, I think, is a reflection of taking those results from previous surveys seriously, work by department leadership throughout the city, work by employees in helping participate and forward their suggestions, increased response rate by employees to the survey so that we are better collecting what is the response of employees in regard to the overall work of the city and how they're feeling engaged in that. Incredibly positive presentation that I think shows both we certainly are acknowledging action items to work on, but that our overall trend is very positive, and as I know was pointed out in several items, statistically significant increases. So we're really showing, I think, some major gains, both in how we're collecting response but improving those results. So I just want to say tremendous thank you to everyone for your work around this. I think our action here is to receive and file this report. And I am not seeing further comments from city council members, so again, thank you all very much for being here. And with that, we are moving on to reports from committees, and I've lost my little sheet, but the first is Committee Development and Regulatory Services with that chair, Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are ten items coming forward for approval tomorrow. Item number one is a PACE financing project at the old Green Institute building, now called the Greenway Office Building. Item number two is making some changes to our tree service ordinance amendment as it pertains to litigation. This would require a certified arborist to work on trees, not to exceed more than four clients per year. Item three are the liquor business and gambling license applications. Item four is a 24-hour operation for the Nicollet Diner. Item five is a licensed settlement conference for Infinity Smokes. Item six is authorizing two contracts, one with Gimmick, to provide lending services for our senior housing initiative and our owner-occupied rehab program. Item seven is authorizing staff to do due diligence work on private property at Lake and Nicollet. Item eight is the classification of tax-forfeited land. Item nine is moving forward with supporting the application to deed for about $600,000 for a company that's located in North Minneapolis. And item number 10 is authorizing the deferral of a loan payment for the Mercado Central. With that, I'll happily answer questions on items one through 10 for tomorrow morning, Friday morning.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions, so we'll move on to our next report from Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee will be bringing four items forward for approval. The first is a staff direction regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day, directing the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to work with leaders in the American Indian community and metropolitan urban Indian rectors to work across city departments to operationalize the spirit and intent of the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. The second item is authorizing execution of up to $100,000 in sub-grant agreements with the Alliance for Metropolitan Stability for outreach related to the North Minneapolis Greenway Initiative. The third item is authorizing execution of a five-year master grant contract with the state of Minnesota, acting as the Minneapolis Community Health Board, and authorize the Commissioner of Health to sign individual project agreements as the community health services administrator for the city. And the fourth item is amending a grant agreement with the Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Prevention to accept $222,200 in funding for an additional year for youth violence prevention activities in Minneapolis. And I'm happy to take any questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, Emergency Management with Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President, or Vice President. We have four items. The first item is to approve a staff direction to the city attorney's office to research and offer a legal opinion on or before October 22nd on whether the city of Minneapolis has a legal authority under civil rights laws to enforce a ban on the use of the name Redskins, as well as a ban on the use of the image worn by the Washington DC professional football team while playing in the city of Minneapolis at a stadium operated by the University of Minnesota. Second item is to approve a staff direction that the city of Minneapolis staff be directed not to authorize expenditures of city resources on future military training exercises in Minneapolis unless approved by the city council. Further, that the appropriate city staff be directed to develop a process, including engagement of the council, for considering approval of future requests by federal agencies, including but not limited to the Department of Defense and other military units to conduct activities in Minneapolis that are likely to cause disruption to Minneapolis residents and businesses. The third item is to authorize acceptance of a grant fund from the DOJ National Institute of Justice, the amount of $93,888, and to execute a contract with them. The fourth item is authorize an agreement with the Minnesota Timberwolves for the Minneapolis Police Department to provide bomb security services for basketball games during the 2014, 2015 season at the Target Center, and to be reimbursed at an estimated cost of $44,640. I can stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Yang. Not seeing questions. Next, we have transportation. Was there a question? Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, and it's actually more of a comment or a heads-up.
Thank you.
This is related to number one, which had to do with the Washington DC football team coming to Minneapolis. We did pass a staff direction, but I'm also working with some council members on a possible resolution to maybe strengthen that a little bit, just the idea of sending the signal from the city council, encouraging the league and the team to change the name. It's based on actually a letter that six of us signed and sent last year that had absolutely no impact, and now they're coming back, and it's taking some new information, including the fact that the president of the universities now sent them a letter, and also a lot of information that we heard at the committee meeting. So I'm happy to share that with folks in the next couple of days if they want to see that. And just to warn you, I might be bringing that forward on Friday.
Thank you very much. Next, Transportation and Public Works, Councilmember Reig.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding ten items for council consideration. Item one is a non-governmental tax-exempt parcel street light operation fee assessment. Item two is a non-governmental tax-exempt parcel street maintenance assessment. Item three is the 15th and 16th Avenue South Bridge over Midtown Greenway Rehabilitation Project. Item four is the municipal infiltration inflow grant application. Item five is the proven application for the Zombie Pub Crawl Block Event. Item six is the On Street Parking Mobile Payment System, and authorize a negotiation with Park Mobile USA to provide those services. Item seven is the South Metro Mississippi River Total Suspended Solids Total Maximum Daily Load, and that's an action to authorize the city attorney to withdraw a petition for a contested case hearing. It's a very significant development, positive cost implications for the city. The following items are referred to the Ways and Means Committee. Item eight is the Green Corps Host Site Agreement. Item nine is a government center parking ramp roof replacement project. And item 10 is a couple of low bids for services and materials for Public Works operations. I will stand for questions.
Not seeing any. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Kuntz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ways and Means Committee will bring forward four items for your consideration on Friday. First are just two legal settlements. One of those legal settlements is referring to a non-monetary settlement referring to the tree servicing that Councilmember Goodman mentioned in her report. The next item is the Convention Center Wireless Network Services Agreement, amending that contract with Insight Wireless and Smart City. And then there's an extension of a contract with Curtis Communications for the Human Resource Classroom online training programs. And the final item are the passage of resolutions approving two tentative collective bargaining agreements, one with the Convention Center Production Technicians Unit. And then the final item is the Water Works Maintenance Unit tentative agreement. Happy to stand for any questions on those four items.
Thank you, Councilmember Kuntz. And finally, we have zoning and planning with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have six items from zoning and planning. The first is, were two appeals related to the Pillsbury A Mill Machine Shop. We are granting one of the appeals related to a door, and we voted to deny the appeal of another condition that would have allowed for three new windows to be added to that building. Item number two is, we are recommending to grant an appeal for a sign variance condition with a condition on that approval for the Marshall Sign at 1313 Fifth Street Southeast. Item number three is at 2316 2320 Colfax Avenue South to deny the appeal filed by four individuals. Item number four is a rezoning for the East Side Food Co-op to allow for an addition there. Number five is at the Mixed Blood Theater accessibility upgrades that would be a rezoning to allow for an elevator addition and an addition to the lobby. And item number six is a rezoning for an addition to Southwest High School.
All right. And with that, I believe that we have concluded with our agenda, and as there are no other special announcement, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.